We are changing the regular tradition with respect to handing out cards. There should be a sign up sheet before you, which means that if you signed up today and you signed up first, you will be called first today. So we just want to make sure that we respect your time. If you have had the opportunity to sign in, that you would do so at this time, and we will make every effort to make sure that you are called in a timely fashion.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach, Tuesday, August 20th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. We have a roll call. Councilmember Diamond is absent. Councilmember Aramo.
Here.
Councilmember Mandell is absent. Vice President Bendo.
Present.
President Moore.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of Acting City Manager Robert Agostisi and Assistant Corporation Counsel Richard Barrios. We'll now have a salute to the flag.
Okay, we'll ask Councilman Anthony Aramo to help us at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united in thy name, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll clarify that only. At this time, we do not have a city manager's report, so I'm just going to move right into the city council report. We felt it was very important that twice a month, we have the opportunity to address you as residents, that you are aware of what's taking place within our city and all of the actions that the city council as a body is actually taking. First, I need to let you know that since our last meeting, I've had the opportunity to communicate via email with our council members, as well as to meet with the exempts, including the acting city manager. The following items were outlined. One, the need for improved communication within the council, communication between the city manager and the city council, as well as the city with the residents. Second, we had a conversation about ways in which we can actually restore public trust. The council requested information regarding the commissions and boards, dates, times, expiration, so that we can have a better sense of what's taking place within our city. The council also requested an organizational chart of all employees. We're looking at the reporting flow, along with all of those members, respective members. Thirdly, the council is currently revisiting Government HR, which was a search firm that was approved earlier this year. Third, we discussed ways in which we could maximize communication with our residents. The council agenda will now be shared on Facebook to maximize resident access to information effective immediately. Also, FAQ of an actual information sheet will be created to encourage residents to contact the city, rather than to, again, alert people on Facebook. Why are we doing this? Because we have a lot of new members who are part of our community, and they're not aware of the numbers. Who do I call if there's brown water? Who do I call if I see a running hydrant? What do I do? And so we're going to be releasing that shortly, so that everyone will have a copy, and once again, you'll have the opportunity to connect with us. More importantly, a work session has been scheduled on Monday, September 9th, at 6:30 PM. All members of our community are encouraged to attend. Please be aware that this is a work session only, which means that this will not include public comment. However, the session will be livestreamed. This session will provide reports from departments and units, so that we can shape future agenda. Also, this will provide sound decision making, and we thank all of you for your patience in advance. Transparency is also a priority for us. Open Government creates reports that educate the public about the city's finances. Moreover, this platform helps to establish goals for departments, programs, initiatives, and then tracks them, while simultaneously keeping the residents updated on spending, performance, and progress. I contacted Open Government and was informed that, A, during Mr. Sherman's tenure, the platform was actually utilized in some capacity before he left, his team left. I also learned that some aspects of Open Government are still available to our present city administration. A demonstration is being set up in sometime in September. The city administration will participate, and the council will also participate on a smaller level to review the demonstration, once it becomes available. Our network specialists, Jamie Roman, along with our city clerk, Dave Frazier, are also exploring other platforms, which include Socrata Open Finance. It's my understanding that New York City also uses this particular platform, and we will also keep you updated. Census 2020 is a priority for all of us, as we seek a complete count, so that we can maximize our resources as a city. We're pleased to announce that the city has heard back from the Census on the additional addresses that were submitted last year through the Census LUCA program. They have accepted 535 new and corrected addresses, which means that those living at those addresses will be contacted to complete the actual Census forms. This is a major achievement for our city, as we work to make sure that we have a complete count. We want to, once again, thank Ray Flammer and his staff, Rebecca, Patty Born, and Ryan McTiernan for their work on this effort. The 2019 Long Beach Movie Nights will conclude with Ralph Breaks the Internet on August 24th at 7:30 PM on Lincoln Beach, 31st. A special thanks are to the East Home Civic Association, the West End Neighbor Civic Association, the West Home and Walk Civic Association, Senator Todd Kaminsky, and the city of Long Beach for making this annual summer event possible. As I conclude my report, the last item is indeed a serious one, and reflects my viewpoint solely as the leader of the council. By now, everyone is aware of the Newsday article and/or the television segments which reference our former city manager and the questionable payouts. There are two council members on this dais that voted against the bond to call attention to the alleged improper payouts in April of 2018, and I am one of them. Last year, we were advised to stay out of it, as the investigation was taking form. It is now 16 months later, and the council, at least some of us, still remain in the dark. We urge De Napoli and De Asingas to, at this time, conclude their investigations with respect to the overview of the payouts now, without fear or special favor. They need to reveal their findings immediately. Although many of us have focused in on the monies that are owed to us by Mr. Sherman, this is bigger and has larger implications. Once again, this not only involves our former city manager, the former and current, but it also involves the former and current employees, co-conspirators, if you will, who signed the former city manager's claim forms. Furthermore, payouts were made to these individuals, thousands of dollars, to some of whom have never left city employment. This is a clear abuse of power. This is a clear abuse of public trust. What steps does the administration need to take to assist De Napoli and Asingas at this time, so that we can have some answers? Lastly, questions have been raised regarding legal costs that have been expended during the investigative process. As taxpayers, are the taxpayers' monies being used to protect those that allegedly took money from them? We need to know. Who is protecting the people of Long Beach? We will get to the bottom of this, and we intend to seek restitution for all that is owed to our city. This concludes my report, and we'll move forward at this time.
Thank you, Council President. I would just like to make a motion. Because we do not have a super majority, I'd like to make a motion to table items 1, 2, 4, and 7, including the public hearings. And I'd like to also re-notice 1, 2, 4, and 7, and the public hearings where applicable.
Okay, I will second that motion at this time.
Voting on the motion to table, Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
Okay. So, items 1, 2, 4, and 7 have been tabled, along with the public hearings. So we'll go right into the calendar, and right to item number 3, which is a resolution declaring the city of Long Beach Lead Agency for certain FEMA HMP building projects, declaring said projects to constitute unlisted actions and adopting negative declarations.
All right. The Capitol plant has a number of items that we were intending to bond for. We're not going to be entertaining the public hearing tonight, however, there's no reason we can't proceed with the conclusion of the environmental review. Many of those projects, most of those projects are and have been designated as Type 2 actions pursuant to SECRE, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, meaning it's been legislatively determined, predetermined, to have no significant environmental impact. So we just need the council to declare that as much, and issue the neg deck, including on the, what is it, I think, three projects, Sean, that are unlisted at this point, that we have short EAFs in here, environmental assessment forms. That's something you require to do for actions that are unlisted under SECRE, meaning they don't fall under Type 1 or Type 2. It's the same exact thing we did on the critical infrastructure land acquisition with respect to the town of Hempstead. We have included the EAFs with these resolutions for purposes of transparency. So we need the council to do three things in order to bond for anything in the Capitol plant. Number 1, declare itself Lead Agency. Number 2, adopt the experts' short EAFs or environmental assessment forms. And number 3, issue negative declarations, and the council's still able to do that tonight.
All right, thank you for the clarification. Are there any questions from the members of the council?
No.
Seeing none, are there any questions from members of the public? Questions? I recognize Mr. Roy Lester.
Good afternoon, Roy Lester, Long Beach. Just two quick questions, and it's only I'm asking because I don't know. It says that the city council has reviewed said findings with which it concurs. Was that just a review, or did you have your own experts that talked to you outside of the people who put in these findings?
Yeah, we retained experts. It's listed.
No, I know. So when you concur with the findings, you're concurring with the people you hired, you had nobody to tell whether they were right. Is that correct?
Well, that's the purpose of the experts, right? I mean, that's what they're retained to do.
So in other words, you hire experts, and then you concur with their finding, that you have no independent, city council has no independent oversight over this, except to say, "We hired you, so you're right."
No, they can disagree, but this is the oversight you're seeing take place right now. It's the purpose of this.
What I'm asking is, is there any independent oversight that the city council has, other than saying, you know, "We have this expert that we paid, we have their report, you're correct"? There's nothing beyond that?
Maybe it'd be easier if you just, once again, explain what the whole purpose is for SECRE, maybe just talk a little bit more about it.
No, I understand what it's for. I understand. All I'm asking is--
But for the other people who are listening in, I just want to make sure for clarity.
All right. No, there's no independent legislative oversight over the experts. That's what the administration's for, it's executive oversight. And then it's either affirmed or denied by the legislative body. That's how it works.
So you blank, so-called blindly, just whatever the expert says, that's what you agree with?
You want to--
I recognize Mr. Miranda.
Yeah, to the council, you know, the first--
Can everyone hear him in the back? Okay.
The first brush on this is the engineering department. Myself and the deputy commissioner, we look through these projects, and we go through and we do our own internal SECRE evaluation as to what we think it is, and then we refer it to the specialists, the engineering firms that are hired to do the design on these projects, and they review it, and they concur with our findings, that these were unlisted projects.
So there is. So you have Mr. Miranda looking it over. That's what I wanted to know. Was there any, and it's good to hear, that he looks it over. And the other thing is, on 13A, when we're talking about the Indiana Firehouse, it asks, is there any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action containing wetlands or other water bodies regulated by federal, state, or local agency? Doesn't that join the bayfront? The Indiana Firehouse?
Yeah, but it has a bulkhead, so it's not actually attached to the bayfront.
That's not considered adjoining?
No, because of the bulkhead.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time? Seeing none, we move forward.
Okay. Item 5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept, if awarded, a New York State Environment Facilities Corporation Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant for the construction of covers for the open air treatment basins at the Long Beach Water Treatment Plant project, for the maximum total cost of $800,000.
So just to clarify, with respect to the two grant applications that we've left on the agenda for tonight, we are required to bond for the entire scope of a project, as that project has been estimated by our experts and our engineers, in order to submit the grant application. So while there's nothing to preclude the council from authorizing me to enter into these agreements tonight, it's with one important caveat. They can't be submitted, or alternatively, they'll certainly be denied by the state if we haven't authorized the bonds appropriately on items 1 and 2.
Okay, and in terms of the grant, is there a deadline with respect to the grant applications?
September 15th.
Yes, September 15th.
Yep, that was really for the purpose of the audience. Okay, are there any other questions from the council? Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Are there questions with respect to item number 5? Okay, seeing none, we move forward.
Item 6 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept, if awarded, a New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant for the 1.25 million gallon elevated water storage tank project, for a maximum cost of $9,240,540.
I'd just like to issue the same caveat that I did with item number 5.
All right, any questions with respect to item number 6, from the council? All right, at this time, we'll open the floor once again. Any questions with respect to item number 6 from the public? And I recognize Mary Valesavage.
Mary Valesavage, Long Beach. Good evening. Is this, Mr. Miranda, I guess this would go to you, sorry.
That's why I'm sitting up here.
Would this be, remember I mentioned that the governor had monies up for grants to upgrade water systems? Is this what this is, or is this like a Band-Aid that we're putting on it?
No, this is a major upgrade to the system. Eventually, we'll replace two storage tanks, one that's 110 years old and one that's 75 years old. And this is through the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act that the governor has passed.
Okay, so that would now all be covered, right? The whole $9 million?
No, negative. The maximum it can cover is 60% of the project, or up to $3 million. So if we were to get the maximum on this project, we would get $3 million.
And then we--
And we would still need to finance $6 million. The standpipe is beyond repair, so it needs to come down. The elevated tank is facing, in the next couple of years, probably a $3 million paint job.
Well, I'd rather say I have to borrow for things like that than other things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Mr. Lester.
I know we talked about the tank before, and it would take a while to build, as I understand.
Well, we have money appropriated in this year's capital budget to take down the standpipe, which is the tall, thin, 1 million gallon tank, which actually, we can only use 360,000 gallons of because of pressure gradients. But in that money is also the design, so that we could go right out to bid, once the next year's capital budget's approved or the grants approved, and then we would probably take about a year to build the tank.
Now, right now, we don't know for sure how much we're getting in the grant. Is that correct, or is it guaranteed?
That's correct. We can get up to $3 million.
Well, is there any minimum that we can get?
Zero.
Zero? So when we're talking about, you know, assuming we got the maximum, we're talking about a $6.4 million bond? A $6.2 million bond, I'm sorry. Would that have to be all bonded within the one year?
That would have to be bonded. What we've done is, with the help of our new controller, we went through some of the options. If we do not get the grant, we still also have an option to bond this through EFC, which would give us some better financing. Worst-case scenario is that we'd have to do a serial bond, you know, public improvement serial bond, and we would bond it for 30 years, and the additional would create an increase in the rates on water fund revenues of 7.5% or $26 per household on an average bill. Best-case scenario is we get the $3 million, and we finance through the EFC, and that would create a 4.5% increase on total water fund revenues, which would be an increase of about $15 per residential bill annually.
Do we have any idea what the bond would cost us, as far as the rate goes?
This CMA figured the cost of the issues in all their calculations on these bonds.
I'm sorry, they figured the cost already?
Yes, they figured the cost of going out to bonding into the numbers that we used.
And what was that number?
I don't have all of them on hand. I don't know, Venus here, she might know them all.
Good evening.
Okay, I'll try to answer the question. Can everyone hear me well, in the back?
Yeah.
I have a couple of scenarios, and by the cost, I assume the total interest. So if we were to borrow $9 million for, if we were to borrow $9 million for the period of 30 years, the interest rate on the average would be 2 and 1/4, and it would cost the city over the period of 30 years about $3.5 million.
Okay, can you pull the microphone out for her, so that she can?
You guys can talk, my--
Thank you.
Okay. So I assume that none of that was heard, whatever I said before, and I'll repeat it again.
Thank you.
If we were to borrow $9 million for the period of 30 years, an interest rate, as it stands now, obviously is not the same as it would be when we are going for the borrowing, and that would be probably in calendar 2020, because we wouldn't know the outcome of the grant approval process until sometimes later in calendar 2019. If by the cost, you mean the total interest payment over the life of the bond, it would cost the city about $3,473,000, about $3.5 million. If we were to finance the same $9 million over 40 years, the actual, the payments, annual payments, would be lower, but obviously, the total cost to the city would be higher, and total interest payment over the life of the bond of 40 years would be $5,341,000. If we were to receive $3 million grant from the state and did not finance it through the state, for 30 years, it would cost the city about $2.3 million. $6 million for 30 years, it would cost the city about $2.3 million. I don't have the numbers for the, with EFC subsidy, but it would be about the same, $2.3 million. I don't have the exact number.
Is it fair to say that it would also be very difficult to establish an exact number because the interest rates fluctuate over a period of time, or?
It's impossible.
Okay.
It's impossible. It's what the rates are right now, and it's obviously a function of where the rates will be when we go for the bonding.
Right.
But as we get closer to that and ready to bond, we would have a better idea, and those estimates would become short-term.
No, thank you. I mean, I'm aware that it's impossible, but I just wanted to make sure that people who are watching us livestream understand the complexity of the issue. Thank you for the clarification. Are there any other questions, Mr. Lester?
Just while you're here, would the grant, would we get the grant upfront, or would it be given to us piece-me?
The grant would be paid to us after we expanded the funds, and it would go to pay down the bond.
So we would have to bond for the grant?
We would do a bond anticipation note, and then when the project was done, we would get paid by the state, and then we would just bond, long-term, the remaining balance.
So we have to bond the $9 million?
We'd have to bond the $9 million, correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ena. Are there any other questions with respect to item number 6? Seeing none, we move forward.
Okay, 7 has been tabled. Item 8 is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to amend the agreement for the removal and replacement of the police and fire department's split air conditioning and heating system.
All right. Once again, Commissioner Miranda.
Okay, during the course of the project to replace the HVA system in the police station, we needed to make some changes to the contract. Well, first of all, we needed to spend $20,000 for temporary AC, because the project started in the heat of the summer. Certainly couldn't have emergency personnel working in hot areas like that. Second, we needed to do an independent steel inspection for the tonnage that supports the HVA system on the roof that needed to be paid for by the city through the contractor. Third, was asbestos air monitoring, which needs to be independent of the contractor's work. We, and the fourth item was, the detectives informed us that the vents that exist in the detective's office, when they come down, blow their papers all over. So we had to change the type of vent we put in, so that instead of it coming straight down, it goes out to the sides. The, we had a $20,000 contingency in the contract, so that pretty much was used up by the temporary AC. So to take care of this other three items, we needed another $10,371.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council at this time? Questions?
No.
All right, at this time, are there any questions from members of the public? I'm looking for someone else, but I guess it's you, Mr. Lester. Come forward.
Okay, if I'm not mistaken, was this a $240,000 project? I'm trying to remember.
No, it was $430,000.
Okay. I know we had gone through this project quite a bit, and several times, and I guess I'm a little upset that we had somebody who, you know, a high-tech air conditioning service that had bid on it, and, you know, gone through it and looked at it, and didn't find $30,000 worth of errors, so to speak. Now, I know, we have $20,000 in contingency--
Correct.
But that still doesn't mean we're not $30,000 over budget, you know?
But I just want to clarify something. Those weren't errors in the contract. The one item, the $20,000, was so that we could supply temporary AC. That was not part of the contract. The steel inspection is required to be done by an independent source paid through the contract, and in addition, the asbestos air monitoring is required, that we hire the monitor to make sure that it's tested on legitimately, and then it's paid through the contract. The only extra, really, was the change in the vents, and that was about, I think, offhand, I don't want to say exactly, but I think it was somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000 extra to change the vents.
So I don't understand it. We knew, we knew about the temporary air conditioning, and yet we put $20,000 aside for contingency. If we know about temporary air conditioning, that we have to pay it--
Well, if you recall--
Why are we putting $20,000 aside for the air--
If you recall, when we bid this contract, it was bid in the winter, okay? And it was not awarded because of the high price, and we were looking to try to do something different, and all those options turned out to be much more costly, to like, put temporary air conditioning into the police headquarters for the entire year, would have been over $200,000.
I remember.
So it was determined that, so we bid, we awarded this project to the contractor late. If we had awarded it when we originally wanted to, then we wouldn't have needed the temporary air conditioning, and the $20,000 contingency would have been more than enough. air conditioning, and the $20,000 contingency would have been more than enough.
Why did we use a contingency money that we knew we had already spent? Why did we put it as contingency money? That's not contingency.
We put contingency in every contract we put out, and we lay out.
Not when you know you're going to spend it. That's not contingency.
We didn't know at the time we bid the contract. If you would listen to what I said, when we bid the contract, we thought the work would be done in the winter, and we would not need the temporary AC. The contract was delayed in being awarded, and therefore required temporary AC.
So you say, when you say the additional work totaling $30,000, that was mostly, you say, $27,000 of that was the temporary AC generator rental?
No, $22,000 was.
$22,000. Okay.
All right, thank you.
It's just the planning. All right, thanks.
You can't, it's hard to plan for the future when something like this happens. It was an unforeseen situation. I think we all remember that, and we're glad that we're moving forward. Are there any other questions at this time? All right, now seeing none, we move forward.
Item nine is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter into an agreement for design engineering services for the secondary digester cover replacement at the city's waste water treatment plant.
After we finished the project of cleaning the two digestors down at the plant, we were seeding the second digester. So these digestors have movable roofs to trap methane gas. They're steel roofs. One of the vents failed to open when we were transferring sludge from one tank to the another, and the roof on the secondary digester buckled. So we cannot use that secondary digester right now. So it required to go out to, for an RFP to have it designed for replacement. We had three proposals. CDM Smith was the middle course proposal. However, in CD Smith's proposal, the thing we liked were they were the one proposal that said we can look at doing a repair since the plant is going to be shut down hopefully by 2022, and therefore make a temporary repair where the digester can still be used. So they need to get inside that tank. So we thought it was the most, we thought it was the best proposal by the review committee to move forward and try to come up with a more economical way to replace the roof, which could become quite expensive.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the council at this time?
So just for clarity, the 96-760 is if they have to replace, correct?
The 96-70 is if they do the complete, they'll do all the due diligence on looking at replacing first.
Right.
So, but if they can't, if it can't be repaired, then they'll have to design a replacement, and we will run the full $96,000.
Okay. So, but if they can repair, will, there'll be a savings?
Right. They will not be doing the repair. They'll be doing the design work for the repair.
Right.
Are there any other questions from the members of the council? All right. We'll open the floor to the residents at this time. Are there any questions at this time? Wow, all right, seeing none. We move forward.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 278 West Park Avenue for a protein shake, juice bar, and supplement store. This item is for publication only, a hearing will be held September 3rd at 7:00 p.m. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 880 West Beach Street for a wellness center and CBD-related products store. This item is for publication only, a hearing will be held September 3rd at 7:00 p.m. Now on to the voting. Okay, so start with item three, resolution declaring the city of Long Beach Lead Agency for certain FEMA-HMP building projects, declaring said projects to constitute unlisted actions and adopting negative declarations. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept, if awarded, a New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant for the construction of covers for the open air treatment basins at the Long Beach Water Treatment Plant project for a maximum total cost of $800,000. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
Item, whoops, wrong page. Item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept, if awarded, a New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant for the 1.25 million gallon elevated water storage tank project at a maximum cost of $9,240,000, $540,000. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Vice President Bendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
Item eight is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to amend the agreement for the removal and replacement of the police and fire department's split air conditioning and heating system. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Vice President Bendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
Item nine is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter into an agreement for the design engineering services for the secondary digester cover replacement at the city's waste water treatment plant. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Vice President Bendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
And item 10 is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 278 West Park Avenue for a protein shake, juice bar, and supplement store. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Vice President Bendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
And finally, item 11 is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 880 West Beach Street for a wellness center and CBD-related products store. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I will.
I will.
Second?
I will.
He covered it.
Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Vice President Bendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
Will you make a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Vice President Bendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes. All right, this concludes this section, session of our meeting. At this time, we're going to move forward with good and welfare. I want to remind you that this is a conversation. We're going to engage in civil discourse. Also want to remind you that just because you can say it doesn't mean you need to say it. So let's move forward. All right, let's hear from Mary Volasevich.
Mary Volasevich, I'm going to speak first from Northeast Bank. This past weekend, we had our summer family party, and quite a bit of discussion was about near vehicle crashes with pedestrians, bicycles, and I think we need a little more presence. People roll through the stop signs or don't stop. They back up out of one-way streets, and it's really unsafe, and it's like a Speedway down there on Pine, and it doesn't get any better. I know you put more signs up. I know Commissioner Tagney has people go down there, but it has to be, it can't be sporadic anymore. It has to be more consistent. Two people almost got T-boned on Saturday, and a young girl on a bicycle was able to swerve at the last second before she was hit from people going north or south onto Pine Street. And people just aren't stopping. They just don't stop. So if we could work on that a little bit. Okay, now I'm speaking as Mary. I'd like to thank John for bringing some of these events that happened, that we have all this news about, to light. I would like to thank you for that, you know, considering the payouts and what went on, and hopefully we get some answers. So thank you, John. When you have meetings, as you said before, Ms. Moore, when you have these meetings, like with the exams, or you had some meetings with people, do you invite the rest of the people to go because that was a bone of contention with the other people? So are any of the people going with you? My philosophy in life is don't meet with anyone unless you have somebody with another pair of ears.
Absolutely. Just for clarification.
And I want to know if you had these meetings, were any of the other council members asked to come?
Sure. So first of all, for clarification, I didn't have several meetings. All I did was just introduce myself as the council president to the members who are exempt. However, that information was communicated to all of the members of the council via email. Everything that I've been doing, they've been receiving actual email updates from me so that we're all on the same page. And I didn't leave anything out. They were aware of what the items that I outlined, what they were. They already received that information before I went because we want to stay on one team. So we're, we're working to building a unified voice, and I, again, I understand exactly what you're saying, and that's my philosophy as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for always coming. Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Now we'll hear from Tracy Eichler.
Good evening. Tracy Eichler, Long Beach, New York. So what is it going to take to make the beach accessible for everyone? That means people with disabilities, our senior citizens, and moms and dads with strollers. It's an election year, folks. I think it's time you listen to your constituents, take some action for 2020 beach season. There are approximately 32 beach entrances Nevada to Pacific. Can we get 25% beach accessibility? That's just eight mats. It's not a stretch goal. It's doable, and it's actually exceedable. The timeline, May 2016. It circulated on Facebook, a petition by the Project 11561 group. I don't even know who they are, but they encouraged the city council to place mobility mats throughout Long Beach. 900 residents, all constituents, and hopefully all voters supported the effort. The ask was six mats to be placed, four on the east end, two on the west end. That would be 19% beach accessibility. The city manager and council at the time said it was already in the works. The mats were planned, they had three mats installed. The placement was inconsistent, in some cases, missing altogether. They were not used correctly, never making it to the water line. Three mats, 9.5% beach accessibility. July 2017, Long Beach Commanding Offices Association donates a mobility mat. The COA president at the time actually stated that people are begging for beach access. So the three mats become four mats upon the city council passing a resolution to accept the donation in 2017. The city put in a request for funding with Assembly Representative Miller, who has yet to get state legislation passed, four mats in 2017. That's 12.5% beach accessibility. July 2018 to July 2019, nothing. No increase in beach accessibility. We have the same four mats, but placement remains inconsistent, and they still aren't being used properly. The state funding promised by the Assembly Representative Miller, nowhere to be seen. The bill didn't even make it out of committee. As far as placement inconsistency, our website states, as of this morning, the mats were available on Minnesota, Long Beach Road, Neptune, and Lafayette. Wrong. When I called the city to confirm the location this morning, Long Beach Road does not have a mat, but Lincoln does. Did they reach the water line? The answer was no. So it's August 20th, 2019. We have 20.5% beach accessibility, which hasn't changed in three years. Stop waiting for the issue to go away. Stop waiting for state funding and start listening to the residents who are begging for access.
You can finish your thought. Go ahead.
What brought me here tonight is just another Facebook post. This time, it's the I Love Long Beach group. I don't know who they are either. We have raised funds in the past. The center of town looks like a cemetery with the memorial gardens. I'm still trying to figure out what the cost of those is, what the annual maintenance is, and who benefits. No one is visiting those balls, no one. The boardwalk is full of paid advertisements for local businesses. Does the city make any money on those flags? If yes, where does the money go? Do the residents of Long Beach benefit? The memorial benches provide comfort in more ways than one, and they are a result of donations by everyday citizens. I repeat, donation. It is time to refocus. It's time to have a goal. I challenge you to raise beach accessibility to 25%. That's eight mats in the next 10 months. Start a fundraising campaign, accept donations, redirect funds. I mean, do we really need a paper calendar in 2019? Alexa can tell me when the garbage pickup is. Get creative. I researched the mats. DMS, who is involved with the COA donation, have mats with ad panels. They have in-house design capabilities. I'll make it easy for you. I will personally donate the first mat.
Okay. So can you, you can wrap it up?
Just think if the 900 respondents in 2016 donated $10 each, we would have two more mats. You raise money to run for office, you could raise money to increase the quality of life for the residents of Long Beach, making the beach accessible to everyone. It's not a stretch goal. It's doable, and it can be exceeded. Thank you.
Okay, stay there, stay there. Don't go away. So first of all, you've raised this issue, and you're not alone in raising this issue. First, I'm glad that I got to connect with you today. I'm glad that you came out. I really appreciate that because there are so many people who do raise a lot of concerns, and I get notifications all day when I'm at work, but I'm grateful that you actually took the time to come out tonight.
You're lucky I had some time today at work to do nothing but this.
However, I applaud the fact that you, as a resident, are willing to actually donate a mat. That speaks to who you are as an individual, that speaks to the fact that you love this Long Beach community. However, this is a local government, and we are responsible. We're responsible to show the residents that we do care and that we are committed to equal access and all access. This has been, I want to say, a challenge. I can only speak to the four years that I've been here because I was, I was here listening to people who are also very emotional because they want to access everything that everyone else has, and the beaches should be available for all, all to enjoy. What do we need to do now? We need to take action. So one, first, we need to move forward, and we need to rectify the issue of communication. There are a lot of people who, again, for whatever reason, there's a misunderstanding about where the mats are located. We did reach out during the last city council meeting because there were some questions raised with respect to the placement of the mats. And we reached out, and Mr. Phil Regona confirmed the placement of those areas. So we will go back, we will find out. I will request that our ADA officer come to the next meeting and give us a full report, number one. Number two, in terms of eight mats, we will have a conversation. This is the first time where, again, we're in a position where we can actually begin to look at what the residents have said and plan accordingly. This is not the first time that residents have demanded that something take place. So now we're moving in a different direction where we're listening to the residents, and we will take some kind of action. Whether I'm up here next year or not, we will take action with respect to these Mobi mats because this is about equal access for everyone. So your position has been heard. I am going to ask Mr. Miranda if he could just speak a little bit with respect to the challenges that some of the mats, some of the challenges that we face with respect to addressing this issue.
I read his statements back in 2017 about the trucks and the vehicles, and yeah, you don't have to repeat it for me.
Well, it goes, it goes beyond that. And just to recover, you know, over the last two summers, remember, we had a lot of work going on with the Army Corps, so mats were inconsistent and did have to be moved around. Originally, the mat was at Long Beach Road, and the Army Corps was just finishing up work with National Grid for their 48-inch pipe crossing at Long Beach Road, so we needed to move that mat. And that's why I went to Lincoln. My apologies that it didn't end up on the website. There's several issues that mats do cause for us. It makes, we cannot run the mats down to the high-tide line. It interferes with removal of tideline debris that we've, this year, we've had an excess of seaweed. Also, the mats are very labor-intensive to put down and take up. They, every 50 feet require a two-foot stake, and we do a lot of beach maintenance to get that sand to be like talcum powder on the beach. That's what people love about the Long Beach sand. The mats would interfere with sand raking. We, on Unfortunately, even the one the commanding officers donated last year, one of the sand rakes just caught it and tore it up. It makes it very difficult, and it's labor-intensive for us to pick all those mats up. So those are the issues that we're faced with in terms of beach maintenance. I will review it again with our beach superintendent, but these are the things that we have to face to make sure that we have, you know, the kind of sand and beach that everybody in Long Beach enjoys.
And also, go ahead.
Have you reached out to other communities where they have these on every single beach access point?
I'm not aware of any community that has them at every single beach access point.
I'll provide you with a list.
Okay, so you're going to stay in contact with us, but also just keep in mind.
I'm going to stalk you, is what I'm going to do.
That's fine, that's fine. I have no problem with that. I have lots of stalkers. So I'll just say this, in terms of the communication, we will need people like yourself to be a part of the committee. Many of you who were here for four years understand that I did ask that we could have a citizen group that could come together and meet on a regular basis. I never received responses from people, but maybe now people are fed up and they're finally ready to be a part of that conversation. And I will definitely be in contact with you at that time. So thank you, and we're going to move forward. All right, Liz Trusden. Good evening, Liz, and I forgot to say hi to MacGyver.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, we're still learning. Liz Trusden, Long Beach, New York. I sent an email to all the city council members regarding the legal issues that were, can you hear me every?
Yes.
Last week by Sam Pinto. So I'm just going to run through some questions, and just to repeat what was in my email, so everyone knows. Regarding outside legal counsel, is it being paid or provided to for the benefit of current or former employees during these investigations? If there is any outside counsel, and if there is more than one, who is it? Is the city itself paying for outside counsel for itself? If any outside legal counsel is being paid for the city, who made that decision? And was Mr. Agostisi, whose own payment is subject to investigation, is he receiving outside counsel or inside counsel regarding to the investigation? And if any outside counsel was being paid for the city, actually, why is that? The city should not have to be turning itself into whether city funds were misappropriated. Why on earth would more taxpayer dollars be used to defend against investigations into whether monies were improperly paid out? My second thing. On last Friday, I was at a meeting with Ryan regarding, do you want me to wait?
We're with you.
Okay. Regarding the ninth and the flood insurance. If you may remember, Senator Schumer came to Mr. Flammer's house, and we did a, they did a presser regarding the increase of flood insurance. It's a reality that's coming down the road, and many in the New Jersey shoreline communities have put in resolutions to be adopted. And I have a couple of them here, and I will give them to you, but just so everyone knows what's coming down the pipe from the federal government and the flood insurance. Point Pleasant has proposed, whereas, you know I thought that word. The proposed provision provides for the following unacceptable terms. The increase of rates to primarily homeowners up to 18% annually until their actuary rate, meaning every four years, may double. The increase of rates to secondary homeowners will be up to 25% annually until they reach their actuary rate. The increase to risk premiums for communities that have higher construction replacement costs, that's us. The implementation of risk-rating 2.0 mapping, which will result in higher premiums the closer you live to the water. And an increase to the cost compliance limits that is still insufficient to meet actual numbers. I'm going to give these to our city clerk for you to look at, and if we can get a resolution like the other communities, we would be the first on Long Island to do so.
Okay. All right, so first, thank you for the information with respect to the flood insurance. And we will definitely do whatever we can to review the material and get back to you in a timely manner. With respect to the questions regarding the current, I would say, current investigations, I guess I would ask our corp counsel to, are we able to make any kind of statement? Obviously, we can't share detailed information, but is there something, a general statement that we can make to the public with respect to the counsel that's being used to either assist those individuals who are within the city of Long Beach in terms of, with respect to the payments?
I think this was touched upon in the last meeting, I was at the last meeting?
Oh, sorry, microphone.
I was at the last meeting. I think this kind of touches upon the ins and outs of investigations that are pending, and the only thing I could really comment is that we're cooperating.
Oh, you got to use your.
We're cooperating with any pending investigations. As far as the other questions, I can't even give you an answer at this point.
Okay, so we can only say that we're, at this time, as a city, we're just, pretty much, we're just cooperating with the ongoing investigation?
That's right.
Okay, and we can't speak to any costs in terms of legal costs or legal expenses that the city is in some way incurring at this time? We're not, are we not allowed to speak to or address the expenses? From a legal perspective?
From a legal perspective, I actually don't know the answer to that right now. I would have to look into it. I don't know the answer to that question right now. I would have to look into that and see if I can provide you an answer after the fact.
Okay. And at some point, I guess, will we, as a city, be able to release some kind of financial document that will outline the amount of legal expenses that the city is actually going to expend as a result of this investigation and our cooperation with the investigation?
I will look into the question and the issue you presented.
Okay, thank you. At this, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Miranda.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind all the residents that, you know, we do participate in the community rating system, and you should all check your flood insurance. Based on the work that the deputy commissioner does on the CRS, you are all entitled to a 15% reduction in your flood insurance, and you should make sure that you're actually getting that 15%, because we do a lot of work on the community rating system, and for you not to get the 15% would be a shame. So you should check on your flood insurance, make sure that they've included the 15% reduction.
Okay, I will ask our communication director to create something so we can get that information out as soon as possible to the residents, so that they're aware of this 15% reduction that you've referenced. Thank you for that information. At this time, we'll hear from Mr. Roy Lester.
Hello again.
Hello.
A couple of questions. The signs on the jetty, were they ever replaced? I haven't seen them.
I believe, well, the last time I was on tour, this was only about two weeks ago, I saw the signs. They are there, the signs are there. Is there a particular area that you did not see a sign?
Well, you know, where I normally swim on Lafayette, I don't remember seeing one, and I ride the boardwalk. I don't remember seeing them, but it's good if they are replaced.
Yes.
I'll have to look more carefully.
Please, please let me know.
Yes. The bike lanes on the boardwalk, I keep bringing that up. I consider it, especially on weekends, very dangerous. And sometimes they have to walk signs out in the middle of the thing, and there's nothing going on, like there were this morning. There was no event going on, and they put the walk signs right in the middle. I don't understand that. It seems like a hazard for people who are riding their bikes to ride into. But we looked about, we talked about marking those bike lanes, and we've been talking about that for years.
Years.
And nothing's getting done, you know.
I'm not going to disagree in any way. This is an unresolved issue. This has been going on for years. Again, there are so many residents who've come up with very creative and innovative ways to address the issue. Again, at a certain point, we will address this issue, and we will come back before our spring season to at least share something, because this is unresolved.
Just to clarify, we are testing paints right now, aren't we?
We just tested some paint, and it washed right off. The epi wood is so dense, it's hard to paint it. So we're looking at the possibility of, at each entrance to the boardwalk, is replacing a strip of epi wood with yellow pine and painting it, pre-painting it with markings. Some of the issues are, though, too, the bikers, you know, think it's a speedway. You know, maybe there's certain times where you can go those speeds on your bike to exercise, but when the boardwalk is in its highlight during the day, I mean, there's little kids, they don't read signs, they don't read lines. You know, maybe the bikers have to slow down a little bit, too, and take it as it's meant to be a nice leisurely ride to enjoy the view, not a speedway.
None of these remedial measures, obviously, or potential remedial measures, is or should be construed as an admission of any sort, you must say. I hate that they had that.
Most of the bikers I know have the big fat tires and no helmets, and they're not looking at it as a speedway. They just, you know. But last thing, we used to have showers on the beach. What happened?
Again, as part of the Army Corps project, when they built the crossovers out another 90 feet, part of their contractors installed water supply for us, and they're still in the process of doing that. Once water supply is installed to the end of each crossover, the showers will be reinstalled.
The showers will be at the end of the crossover? They're not going to be?
They'll be at the beginning of the beach. Where you come off the beach, they'll be on the waterside of the crossover, like they used to be. Just right now, there's not a water source, because they're still running that.
Okay.
So they're still in transition, unfortunately.
Yes.
Hang on for next summer.
Used to it.
Thank you. Leanna Baker. Good evening, Leanna, thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak, and, Bendel Navy, gotcha. The reason why I wanted to speak before you is I live in the 700 block of Walnut, which is parallel to Park Avenue. And during the week, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00, and the evenings between roughly about 4:30 to 6:30, we have a traffic problem. People are driving in excessive speeds, and I heard the young lady speak about law enforcement. If I had my way, I'd have all of our cops in my neighborhood, but that's not going to happen. You know, it's unrealistic. You know, I want them to give out tickets. So, you know, they've been tearing up our street for the gas lines. So I'm wondering, are you going to repave that street? And if you are, are you going to put in speed bumps? I'd like to talk to you about it.
All right, did you want to?
The, those streets will be repaved by National Grid when they finish with their gas main work. We've got them agreed to repave the street. However, they will not put speed bumps in. That would have to be done through a petition by the residents, and then we would have to pay for that separately out of city funds.
Okay, so who on this board can I talk to to get that done?
The speed bumps?
Yeah.
Yeah, the speed bump is done through, it's my understanding, it's done through the Long Beach Police Department. All right, you would have the opportunity to actually access the petition. You would go to your neighbors, you would bring it back there, and then the process would begin.
Yeah, because not all the neighbors want speed bumps in certain blocks, so we wait to get a petition from everyone.
Well, I've been speaking to my neighbors, and what we've been encountering, and this is not just summertime, on the weekends, believe it or not, people are driving more slow, because they're looking for parking.
Absolutely.
So it's when they're going to work and coming back to work, and just last night would prompt me to come here, this is my first time here, actually. Her and her little girl were almost mowed down by a reckless driver. I've almost been hit. I had a guy get out of his car and start yelling at me, because he didn't see me. He was too busy on his vaping pipe. So it's getting out of control. I've notified law enforcement, because people think we're a throughway akin to Park Avenue when they're going to work and coming home. So I will go to the police department, I'll do what you requested, and how many signatures am I going to need?
Has to be a majority, I believe, of the residents on the block.
Okay.
From, you know, one intersection to the next.
Oh, I'm going to do it down to Maple Avenue, so, all right then, thank you.
And please, please stay in contact with us, so we're aware of where you are with respect to the progress?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
So before I move on, just a question. One of the reasons you're getting that traffic, and I will say, I'm in the morning, I'm one of those people, is because the timing of the lights on Park Avenue is all screwed up. So you can't make it down Park Avenue without hitting multiple lights. So I guess, and I don't think our police commissioner is here.
I wouldn't mind the traffic if they were driving the proper speed.
If they obeyed the traffic laws.
Exactly. But we're not seeing that. I'm seeing the California stops, rolling through the stop signs at like about 30, 40 miles an hour.
I see it every morning, too.
You know, so.
But who could, who controls the timing on the lights? Is that the county?
It's still the county.
That is the county.
It's the county.
So therein lies the problem, is the lights are improperly timed, so you can't make it down, so people go down the side streets.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt you, councilman. So is there somebody within this legislative body who works with the county to correct that?
It should be our police department, I believe, the traffic division.
Everything's on you guys.
Well, I don't think they, that should fall under the traffic division, I believe.
Absolutely, yes. And you can reach out to them, and I want to encourage you to reach out to all of your neighbors and encourage them to also make phone calls, because what happens is if you're just the one phone call, sometimes it's heard, but obviously, if several people begin to call, then maybe they will post someone out in, you know, on your block to look into that.
All right then.
We thank you so very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's hear from Jay Gussler.
Hi, good evening, Jay Gussler, Long Beach. Not having explicitly heard otherwise, I'm proceeding on the belief that good and welfare is still governed by the Anthony Aramo-imposed three minutes of podium time rule. Accordingly, I ask the council not to interrupt me during my comments. Of course, if I'm wrong about this, I invite clarification from the council.
Okay, so you were here last week. I made it clear that that was not the case. Therefore, you may proceed.
I'm harder here, and I might have missed that.
All right.
In any event, a few meetings back, I asked whether or not the city was supplying or footing the bill for lawyers to represent city employees in connection with the various investigations by various agencies, including NASA DA, New York State Control, and various federal authorities regarding, among other things, the illegal payouts to, quote, "separating," unquote, employees. I got no answer. Last meeting, another speaker asked the same question. ACM Agostisi answered, and I'm quoting here, "None that I'm aware of, period, no," end quote. So according to Mr. Agostisi, he's unaware of the city supplying any legal representation to any of these people in connection with these criminal investigations. Another speaker spoke tonight, since I wrote my comments, basically asking the same question. Mr. Berrios gave you some roundabout non-answer about, I don't even know, I can't even discern what it was that he meant. But this really is a pretty straightforward issue. I have been informed that the city is providing legal representation to various city employees and ex-city employees in conjunction, in connection, I should say, with these various criminal investigations. The question that I have asked and others have asked is not how much is the city paying? I understand it's an ongoing criminal investigation. We may not know for some time how much the city's paying. It's a direct yes or no question. Is the city providing legal representation, in-house, out-of-house, however they're doing it, to any of these individuals? And I am disappointed at the council not insisting, demanding, that corp counsel and/or the acting city manager provide an answer, not just to us, but to you guys. You guys are ultimately responsible for where the city's dollars go. We deserve an answer. Thirdly, as regards some comments Mr. Miranda made earlier regarding Mobi mat placement and his bragging, if you will, about the quality of our sand, I think he described it as talcum powder. My question is, are the mobility challenged, not on pardon the pun, equal footing with the able-bodied in terms of their ability to experience this fine-quality sand? I'm sure that the law and common decency Calling on, regarding Council President Moore's comments at the outset in the meeting, calling on Singus and Denapoli to conclude their investigations into the illegal payouts is obviously a step in the right direction, but really, there's nothing the council can do to force any investigative entity to speed up the process of their investigation. What is within the council's power is to take immediate action directed at removing the architect of these illegal payouts, and that is Acting City Manager Rob Agostisi. Every day that Agostisi continues to be employed by the city is another day that he has an opportunity to destroy evidence and/or obstruct the investigation of his own wrongdoing.
All right. All right. We're moving into descriptive, we're moving into evaluative language, so I'm going to ask you to wrap up your statement.
If Mr. Agostisi wants to seek legal recourse against me, he's free to do that.
We're not responding to anyone because he's speaking to the chair, he's addressing the chair. So as long as he addressed the chair, I'm listening to you. And that means that.
I'm expressing my belief and the council is free to disregard it.
Okay.
That the city, the city has been unable to identify a successor to assume the day-to-day management of the city is, is not an excuse for Agostisi still working here. It's a cop-out and it's a disservice to the residents and it's an affront to open honest and accountable government. The city cannot wait another day to remove this criminal. Yes, I'm calling him a criminal.
Okay. So now we're not civil.
From our midst.
I'm going to ask you.
You don't have to agree with me, but you have to respect my right to express my belief.
Right, absolutely. And I asked you, and I asked you last week, and I'm asking again, that we're not, we're not going there anymore. We have to engage in civic conversation.
All you have to do is hear me. Ignore me if you want, but you have to.
I don't want to, I don't want to ignore you because you're a resident. I'm giving, you already, your time has expired and I allowed you to continue, but now if we're engaging in a tax.
But you've already set the precedent for letting other speakers go on beyond that three minutes.
Absolutely. Absolutely. But if we're attacking people.
I'll conclude by saying, you can toss the word transparency all you want.
Let's conclude.
It doesn't mean a thing as long as the enemy of transparency, Mr. Agostisi, continues to work for our city. I renew my call for the city council to fire Agostisi not a week from now, not a month from now, tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. We'll hear from Nora Egan at this time. I said, thank you.
Just curious, is Hume Diamond coming back to any meetings? She's been away for, what, two and a half meetings?
Again, I have no idea what happened this evening. When I arrived, I was here with my council members. I did not receive an official communication from her. As soon as I do, hopefully by the next time we have our meeting, I'll share it with the public.
Okay, great. Speaking of communication, you brought up a very valid point earlier about having open communication and responding to people. I don't know if the FOIL office is very busy, but they've been late on responding in past few days, so if we could follow up on that. And also, I sent a FOIL, or an email to all city council people possibly three days ago, maybe two and a half days ago, and didn't get a response from any five of you.
Okay.
So if somebody could read and respond, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. I will reach out to you personally.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Eileen Hessen. Good evening.
Mary Volasevich attended the USA National Lifeguard Championships in Virginia. And I think maybe we should congratulate our lifeguards who came in ninth place in a national meeting where many states sent many groups of lifeguards, 40 in all. So congratulations to the lifeguards.
Well, let's give them a hand right now. Congratulations. And I'm surprised because, you know, Mary did say that she was going to bring back the good news. I thought she was going to include it in her, in her time.
She meant to.
Oh, all right. All right. Well, if, I guess after the meeting, I'll take the information and we'll make sure that we get something up on our Facebook page.
Very good. She passed the information along to me.
Well, thank you.
The second thing is that President Moore, I'd like to thank you for the follow-up questions that you're asking of people to help to clarify what their concerns are. And third, I don't like to bring this up, but I am going to. President Moore, when you were speaking about the overpayments at the very beginning of the meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Agostisi started laughing. I assume it was nervous laughter, but I would like to say, Mr. Agostisi, you're still our acting city manager. It was just rude. Please try to show some respect and dignity while Mrs., President Moore is speaking.
Ms. Hessen, I wasn't reacting to anything. Ms. Hessen, I wasn't reacting.
You were laughing.
No. Ms. Hessen, I'm not going to sit here and listen to your, you know.
You were laughing. You turned to Anthony and laughed.
I'm not going to sit here and be the subject of your ridiculous political hijab. Enough. I wasn't reacting to anything Ms. Moore was saying. Just stop.
But you were laughing.
No, I wasn't reacting to anything Ms. Moore was saying.
Maybe you weren't reacting, but you were giggling away.
No, Ms. Hessen.
Well, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Let's move. Oh, thank you.
Done.
All right. Our last speaker this evening is Helen Frost.
Good evening. I'm Helen Frost from Long Beach.
Oh, good evening. Thank you for coming this tonight.
Almost two years ago, I put in a bench request to add a plaque. My son passed away and I have a bench for 9/11 death memorial. And I asked to do this. I filled it out. I paid for it in October of 2017. I have made a humongous amount of phone calls. I spoke to Bianca for at least a year, then she got moved and then this girl, Sky, took over. And every time I call, I'm told it'll be done. It's almost two years and it's not done. And I have a canceled check. They lost my paperwork. I have a canceled check for $555. I either want my money back. I, I'm disgusted. I really am. I think this is disgraceful. My niece got a bench in four months and I'm waiting for this for almost two, it's almost two years. I have the paperwork. I gave it to some other lady. I went up, I've been up here a million times and when I walk into that office where the paperwork is, I said, no wonder they lost my paperwork. It was stacked so high with stuff all over the place. There's no consistency to this. I want to know, am I going to get this plaque? Or am I going to get a check back?
All right. So first, first, I want to thank you for coming tonight. On behalf of the city of Long Beach, we express our deep apology, sincere apology for the time and also for all of the anguish that you've endured in the past two years. Also, we are grateful for people like your son who unfortunately perished in 9/11. We know that anyone who was lost during that time, we consider all of them as angels because of what they went through, because they were Americans and they died in this unfortunate situation. Three, we're not going to let you leave. I know everybody wants to leave, but we want you to hang out with us for a few minutes because we need to get to the bottom of this today. We need to resolve this so that we'll take the information from you and at least we can give you the information that you deserve because your family has been waiting for close to two years to have this resolved.
Right.
All right. Again, I'm not sure if anyone else can address this issue here, so I just need to speak to those who are here. I'm not sure if, Mr. Miranda, you can speak to it, but we need all of your contact information and we want to resolve this as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Did you want a comment or?
Just that DPW used to handle this and when Bianca was transferred to, promoted to work in the tax assessor's office, we lost the, it was moved down to recreation. But one of the issues has been over the last couple of years with the change in the, in the walkovers. We're moving a lot of benches around. We have 920 benches on the boardwalk, so it may have got lost in the shuffle, but I'll take the information, look into it personally and see that it gets done.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. We really appreciate that. Just two brief announcements. I just need to let you know, this is on behalf of West End Arts. They're participating in a community bag program, which means that when, if you have the opportunity to go to Stop &amp; Shop, if you actually purchase a bag that says "give" on it, G-I-V-E, they will receive a dollar for each donation every time this $2.50 reusable community bag is sold and the actual money will actually go to help our artists who are a part of the West End Arts Council. And then lastly, on this Saturday, if anyone is available, we're asking that you would come out for Summer in the City by the Sea. This is an art walk. It's something different and really exciting that's taking place here. We're going to have different displays throughout Long Beach and our first point will be at the Magnolia Community Center. That information will also be available to you. I want to thank you for your patience. I also want to thank you for your presence this evening. We hope that you will continue to come out, tell your neighbors, tell your friends that it's so important for us to be together and to have this conversation. Was there a clarification?
I'm just trying to, so long that US LA meeting's going after the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
The meeting is over, but.
I'm so sorry. I totally forgot. Yes, our Long Beach lifeguards competed in Virginia Beach. There were 40 teams, many teams. California, their lifeguards all year round. Florida, Texas, Canada was there, Puerto Rico was there.